Okay, I will call the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Southbury Board of Selectmen to order at seven P. M., and if we have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not sure that Holly will be making it in. We do have a quorum on a return trip. We'll start out with public comments. Are there any public comments? If you could limit them to two minutes. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and correspondence. The three hundred fiftieth anniversary press release you have. We had that during the last weekend. It was a well-attended event. I've got my sticker on my calendar. I encourage as many as possible to do that also. You have reports with you. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and it carries. Minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second shot? Thank you, John. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and it carries. Unfinished business, we are on to the plan of conservation and development. There were some questions at the last meeting about, in particular, I think, about the excess, excess open space on building lots or homes in excess. The current standard is anything over one and a half times the requirement for the lot. Judy is here to explain what, if they did, or ask any questions. I think that's the one question we have of Judy with that. Thank you for coming in tonight, Judy.
Thank you. Thank you for asking me to come in. I'm just gonna pass this out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So last time when I was here, Mr. Buckspow wanted to have some information provided to him regarding the surrounding towns and how they work out the four ninety and included in this memorandum that you have in front of you, the surrounding towns that I, this is really, really loud.
Can we?
It helps. Middlebury only recognizes farmland and forest land with twenty-five acres or more, and that's following the guidelines of the Department of Ag. Roxbury defines that excess acres are equal to or more than the minimum lot size. Roxbury has minimum three-acre zoning, so they would need anything in excess of six acres. Newtown, in their plan of conservation and development, the most recent, and I think that they go under review next year, but they reference to promote the four ninety tax abatement with no definitive acres. So that's all they offered in their plan of conservation and development. Other small towns, and I just randomly selected these, in New Hartford, it says must be twice the minimum building lot of the district parcel that it lies within. Wellington, it must exceed five acres, and this is part of their ordinance. In Tallinn, which was very interesting, they moved it out of the zoning commission and made it a town ordinance, and there were no specifics listed except that they do not qualify commercial or industrial properties. So I hope that that satisfies your inquiry that you initially had.
So let me, um, let me just provide some background. And first off, thanks for your efforts, the planning commission's efforts in preparing the P O C D. It's a long process, and I know you came in sort of midstream, so you don't have a lot of the background information that I'm gonna mention now, like, at the time it was happening. So there was, uh, a number of years ago, the Board of Finance and, I think, the Board of Selectmen put together a tax abatement study group. It had members of the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, residents in town, some others. And the purpose was to look at the various tax programs in the town of Southbury and come up with recommendations, how to, you know, any changes that would be made, or how to make them better, or whatever. And ultimately, what came out of that process was that task force made recommendations as to three programs: our senior tax relief, our veterans' tax relief, and P A four ninety. On seniors and veterans, we increased various benefits that were allowed under statutes and whatnot. And then this was all done by, you know, they spent months and probably over a year, like, evaluating other towns and other programs and how, you know, it's done throughout the state, to come up with their recommendations. And there were a number of debates and discussions at this board, at the Board of Finance. It's also prior to a number of members of this body. Only me, Jeff, and Justin were on this body at the time that all this was happening. And ultimately, what our body and the Board of Finance did was we unanimously approved the recommendations from this group. Two of them were able to be implemented immediately. We implemented the veterans' tax and the, um, and the senior tax programs, the changes to those because we were able to do that as bodies under ordinances and whatnot. Under P A four ninety, we couldn't implement it immediately. There were two recommendations on P A four ninety. One was, and for those who don't know, P A four ninety deals with a number of things. What we're talking about is the open space component of P A four ninety, which some towns allow tax benefits for it, some towns don't. We're one of the towns that do. One of the aspects of the recommendation was to increase the assessed value of a lot that was designated as open space land under P A four ninety. That's something both the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen voted to implement, but it's something that could not be implemented until the revaluation, which we all just had. Our new assessor has implemented that recommendation. So that recommendation is done. The other recommendation dealt with the minimum acreage requirement for P A four ninety land. And that's where the P O C D comes into play, because this was happening, I looked back, we voted on this in the fall of two thousand nineteen, and the P O C D was coming down the pike in twenty twenty-one. So there was not much of an appetite to reopen it then and go through the whole process. It was, we'll deal with this issue in the new P O C D. And that was the discussion and the debate over a number of meetings, like, that item is gonna be put off. A lot of people wanted it, they, you know, didn't care. They were like, let's just do this now. We're like, we're just, you know, there's processes coming. We'll do it during the P O C D. And the recommendation was, like you said, here, under our current, under the current two thousand twelve P O C D, the open space criteria is one and a half times the minimum acreage requirement in the zone. So if it's a two-acre zone and you own more than three acres of land, you can put whatever is more than three acres into open space land. The recommendation, which, based on this committee's findings, they found to be, um, different than the way a number of towns handled it. And their recommendation was to increase that requirement to a ten-acre minimum requirement. So our board and the Board of Finance unanimously approved that. Now, we don't draft the P O C D, so it was done as a recommendation to the Planning Commission to evaluate as part of the P O C D process. And when the Planning Commission came to us at the beginning of the process, this is one of the issues I brought up, and information was sent as to the history and what happened here and the presentations made to us. So my question is, what, what was done with that? Because in the new P O C D that we all received, the P A four ninety program is the exact same as it was in the two thousand twelve, so no changes were made. So I wanna get an understanding of what the process was there and what discussions were had and the rationale for not making any of the changes.
Well, thank you for that history, because that certainly would have been something that would have helped me come up with how I would present it to the Planning Commission, had I had all that back history, 'cause I scoured all the boxes that I could find in my office of everything that had been accumulated through public meetings and public workshops, as well as different meetings and stuff, and could not find specifically anything or any correspondence between the Commissions and the Planning Commission. So then I had contacted Mr. Tierto, who is the chairman of the Planning Commission, and he too couldn't give me any specifics. So there I was at a loss. So I just had to go with what I had in front of me. So I can't give you any history as to why or why not it didn't go forward into the plan of conservation and development, because I've only been here in the two months, and that was all done already. So where I came in, it was more for grammatical errors and editorial errors. But I can offer you this, that if you guys would like to craft some language, that you would like to see it. And obviously, you've done it as a group, so it's, it's already ready. And if you'd like to submit it to me, I can certainly bring it in front of the Planning Commission and get their thoughts. In conversations with Mr. Tierto, we said, he had recommended that perhaps we just make it a little bit more generic, because it is all governed by the state statute, not only under the Planning Commission, but also under the Department of Ag, because they have control over the open space in four ninety, that we maybe just reference, will follow suit with, not this exact verbiage, obviously, it would be a little bit better put, but to follow suit with the Connecticut general statute. So that way, it would allow us, because this document sits on our desk for ten years and we use it as our manual, that no matter how it changes on the state statute, at least we would be covered.
So the, so...
That was only a recommendation.
No, so would states, would, the state statute doesn't define the programs that the towns can have. You, so you've cited twelve one oh seventy, which is the primary statute that deals with this.
Right, which is from the Department of Ag.
Right. So what that does is it allows towns to have an open space program.
Exactly.
Which must be included in the P O C D and must be, this is the one element of the, of this whole process, though we have abilities to, you know, reject the P O C D, accept it, make comments or whatnot. None of that changes planning's authority to just do what they want with it.
Exactly.
Except for this, this aspect, though. The statute says, in the memo you said, "Provided such designation is approved by a majority vote of legislative body," which is, which is the Board of Selectmen. So the P O C D needs to outline the parameters of the program. And it does, by way of exception, like, it says all land in the town is eligible for this, except, and it lists the exceptions, and one of the exceptions is land less than one and a half times the minimum acreage requirement.
Exactly.
In a particular zone. So if people wanted to implement that recommendation, that exception would have to be changed and would have to say exactly what that would be, if that's what people wanted to do. What I wanted to understand was whether planning addressed this at all. And I know, I know you're, you're new to the process, and I understand that and appreciate it.
Well, I'm not new to the process. I'm new to Southbury.
No, 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 to this, to this, I, that's not, that came out, to this particular, you know, drafting the P O C D in the town of Southbury. I do see there's members of the Planning Commission here, and I'm just wondering if, if anyone can just let us know if this is a topic that was addressed, because if it was, if it was addressed and debated and they decided not to do it, I just wanna understand.
Absolutely.
The rationale, that's, that's all.
Anybody from the Planning Commission wish to?
Oh, I thought there, that was two weeks ago. The members of Planning were here. So maybe that's something for our next meeting. We can just get some, I just wanna get some insight on what, what was discussed, which may inform what we recommend, 'cause there may be some great reasons not to do this, you know, but...
I wish I could offer you that information, but I couldn't, I couldn't find anything.
So I, I just wanted to, I wanted to understand that, because throughout the process, you know, people had reached, because there, there were a lot of people that wanted all these things to happen right then and there. They wanted the assessments to change, they wanted this to change, and we were like, no, no, we're gonna follow this process. So now I'm getting questions about what, what's going on.
Well, I, I went to Darcelle, who's the assessor, and she supplied to me all the application forms that she uses in order to, to review, in order for the assessment and everything. And all of the applications are that of the Department of Ag, and all the applications are similar to other towns and what other towns use as well. So, I mean, we seem to be in harmony with all of our local...
Yeah, it's, it's a state form, like, it's, it's all, right.
Right. It's nothing that we crafted internally.
No, it's just a question of how we define the program, who qualifies. That's what the question.
Right.
So I also think, you know, the three of us were at the, during that time, and of course, this is difficult, 'cause things have, people have changed since then. I think for our other three newer members who weren't there, they had, I think, in order to vote or agree upon it, they would need some guidance from planning, why it stays at one, over one and a half times, why it should be increased to five times, a hundred times, I don't know. I think if I could, for the other board members, they're new to this, well, what's this about and why, how do I make an informed decision? There's only three of us who could really, we were deep in the weeds back in the day. I think we need some kind of a recommendation. It would be unfair for us, we know we should do something or recommend something on this, but I'm not sure that all our other members, half our members, understand why and what, 'cause it was what, a year?
It was, we approved these recommendations in October two thousand nineteen, so it's a long time ago.
Yeah, that is a long time ago.
So I think that's what, John?
So I mean, to chime in in exactly what you're talking about, as far as not have been sitting here, one of my thoughts would be is that the, they made a recommendation, and one email that I'm reading, it said that they recommended a minimum ten-acre lot. So if that recommendation was forwarded, and if you didn't get it, then it just needs to be re-forwarded and confirmed. And then the question basically is whether you're looking through the minutes of the planning, you know, was it discussed, or was it missed? And if it was missed, then it needs to be, so my thought as, as the newbie on the board is to, you know, as long as it was discussed, as long as it was brought up and there's document of that, then we can address what their conversation was.
I couldn't find anything in the Planning Commission. So perhaps it was in the Board of Selectmen minutes or something, and if, and if we can resurrect that and it be forwarded, I'd be happy to bring it in front of the Planning Commission and ask it, you know, for their consideration.
The actual recommendation.
They've been the Board of Finance, I think, a lot of meetings.
So we, so I, so we, we have that. We have the resolutions of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and the presentation, which we can easily forward.
So would that be enough information for me to extrapolate and put together that paragraph that is in what you wish to have revised? Would that be enough information for me?
Yeah, I mean...
Or do you folks as a board wanna comprise of that, write that paragraph that I can submit to the Planning Commission?
So I guess for, I guess before we get to that point, the answer is yes. The information, there's sufficient information in there to revise that one little paragraph and change it. But I think as a matter of process, to the point that there are, half this board is new, right? So maybe, maybe a current majority of this board doesn't want to do that. I don't know. But the P O C D came to, you know, it's been submitted to us with saying X. So as we're now formulating what we're gonna say back to the planning, the first thing I wanna know is whether planning ever had any discussions on X. Because if they did, I just wanna know what they were. If not, then I suspect...
Above and beyond the four ninety question?
The excess open space question.
Just, just this question. I mean, other people may have other questions. This was my main question.
I, I thought maybe there was more that you were gonna come out with that I didn't know of.
I, I also think that, I just wanna let the board know that, you know, we're gonna look at this, but also regardless of what we do, the needle on the grand list won't change much, because those that are under this now are grandfathered in. So until it's sold, it, it, it's until it's sold. So it's not going, you know, to, if you, if you change it to double right now or triple, it's not going to move the needle on the taxes. You'll never see it. So it's not a...
Monumental.
Monumental. It's just, how does the board feel about the, and I think for the, like I said, for the other three members to, to make, other than a recommendation that was made many years ago, I don't think anything's changed, but you truly should understand what that's about and how they came, or didn't come to. Maybe it was just not a thought, maybe.
Happy to, to present it again for planning. And we have plenty of time in order to do that, so our next meeting is in March, and they'd have to, to vote on it as a group. I mean, and, and get a majority vote, too, in order to change it. So, and I'm happy to do that, and I'm sure they're happy to, to review it as well. But what happened between twenty nineteen and, and present day, I have nothing to offer.
Right. So I, I mean, I still want to, like, have some discussion with some member of planning involved in this process to see if this was ever discussed as part of this process. I mean, I suspect I know the answer to that question, but I think we need to sort of close the loop on that, because there may be very good reasons why it wasn't included.
So would you suggest a liaison from your board to come to the planning meeting, or vice versa? I mean, how can I accommodate?
I think we could just call up someone on, you know, call up Richard and just ask him.
I did talk to Richard, and, and he has no recollection of it being brought up or discussed.
Okay.
So that, that...
That's probably the answer then.
So then, in that case, it needs to be brought up?
Right. So I think, so I think the, I think the information that was done should be circulated to all the members of our board, so the new members of this board, you know, have that info and should be sent to you, so you have a little more understanding of what we're talking about. And then our body will have to decide if that's something we still wanna do and recommend to planning as part of this process, whether we want that change in the P O C D.
All right. Sounds reasonable.
I got a question. I'm just, I guess I'm struggling a little bit to understand and not, where is, so as I, as I go through the P O C D, I do have some questions, and it's not, it's really just more, someone who can help me kind of understand what I'm reading and sort of, how does that in, in turn look like for a Southbury ten years from now? And just, I'll go into it briefly. It's the section on, the section on housing and residential strategies, program policies specific to density of units on a site. And if you look at the old verbiage from the two thousand twelve P O C D, there's, there's verbiage in there that talks about how, you know, density of units on a site not exceed its development capacity, the rural character, the town and neighborhood are maintained, and in any event, there's at least fifteen thousand square feet of site area per unit. So, okay, there's a value there, fifteen thousand square feet per unit. The new verbiage changes the, the unit that you look at, and it says, same beginning verbiage, doesn't exceed development capacity, rural character, the town and neighborhood are maintained, and not exceed four dwelling units per acre. So you do a little bit of math and say, all right, how does this, how does this work out? And if you go with the old verbiage, sorry, it works out to two-point-nine-oh-four units per acre. And so you say, okay, well, they're looking to make a change under the policy where you go from, you know, two-point-nine units, which I'm assuming, if you're strict about that, you can't build two-point-nine units. So in my head, I'm like, all right, well, does that, does that mean, I don't know, I'm asking, does that mean that you can only build two units per acre now, and that the new P O C, P O C D is allowing four units per acre, and we're doubling that? And so it kind of cascades in my head, like, what does that mean? What does that look like for future Southbury?
That's a really good question, because I, I would have to request of you to submit that, so we can, you know, comprehensively give you a comprehensive answer back. But off the top of my head, I would, I would...
I wouldn't expect it.
No, I, I would think that it's, it's to do with, with the statutory requirements, because they have changed with affordable housing. And, and I, if I remember correctly, which will take the weight of that as it is, but I think that it is because of the statute change.
Regulation.
Yeah.
All right. I'll definitely require your opinion about that.
Yes, please do, and any, anything else that you find.
Thank you.
So, yeah?
Yeah, so I had two comments.
It's not working either. That's the problem.
Yeah, it's going in and out. Settings are all the same.
So I, I would add basically, thank you so much to you and the panel for doing all this work. It's obviously a big undertaking. It's a huge document. And I guess my first question is, is related to Greg's, which is, is there, you know, being as it is, such a big document, is there a way for the public to understand what is actually changed, outside of taking two huge documents and putting them next to each other? Could it be like an executive summary of, hey, these are the things that we changed that are substantial? Because I think it's gonna be very difficult to imagine possible to relate person to open this up and say, oh, well, I don't like this change, you know?
If they even know it's a change.
That, yeah, exactly. I think it, you know, in the interest of transparency, it might be good to at least point out in ten thousand feet what, what they changed.
The best we could do is, is just allow them to see the two thousand twelve version. I mean, I'm sure that with any price we can get that, but that would come with probably a substantial, substantial feat with that, to have the consultants that drafted this and drafted two thousand twelve to make that comparison. Could it be done? Probably, but it, it would probably be quite expensive. It wouldn't come without a price tag.
Another thing is Lamar Taylor, in the map seventeen, page one fifty-six of one ninety-eight, the preceding text accurately identifies the sewer service planned areas in town, but the map does not. Traditions, heritage crest, east of Woods, and a line going from Heritage Village out to Conqueror Woods should be painted red on this map. It's a small thing, but since we're trying to empower the people, that's something that should be taken. that's something that should be.
Absolutely. And if you could also document that and send it to me, these maps were all created by N V C O G, so I'm sure that it's a minor adjustment in.
I look at town maps all day, so.
So, yeah.
Just a small thing.
No, it's not a small thing.
That's all I have.
Good. Okay, so if you had any questions again, in the interest of mine, if you had these questions, certainly communicate to planning your concerns with it, go look at it. And we can't, we can't communicate with all of us, there's a form, like, or whatever, but you certainly can communicate back and forth if there's, you can't do that. So let's get to the planning.
Because the, the, the document is public now, so it's sitting in the town clerk's office, it's sitting in the, the town library's office, it's sitting on my desk at the counter. So anybody can come in and there's forms there to fill out with any questions. So it, it wouldn't be a matter of ex parte communications or anything like that because you as citizens have the right to, to make input and recommendations as well, so.
Could you email a form back to the board?
It's all on the, on our webpage.
It's on the webpage. The forms are there, the files are there.
So electronic forms, you can either fill it out and, perfect.
Is, I know S L R did this, did Malone do 2012 or someone else? I just don't, I don't remember.
I think they did.
I think they did.
So to Justin's point, can we, can we reach out to S L R and just ask them what would be entailed in doing like a summary of changes? Not, not a summary of every, you know, there's a lot of changes, a lot of verbiage, but, you know, big.
Substantial changes.
Big policy changes so that the public can see that and what, you know, what would be entailed in that process.
In, in a fee that's related to it.
Of course, there's always, there's always, there's always a fee.
Always out of your budget, nothing out of mine.
Good thing we're heading into budget season, you know?
But if need be, I'll take a look and see where my budget's at too. Because it's all our budget. All of our budgets are all of our budgets, contrary to popular belief sometimes. We make things happen, shortfalls and longfalls, we make things happen. That's what we do. Okay? Thank you, Judy. Sorry to bring you out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else you want to discuss on the P O C D? Are we, do we feel we should set a public hearing date just now yet?
I mean, I think we can under the statute and since the, since this just was released yesterday, I think it would be helpful to at least do that. So if anybody wants to provide comments to this body, they'll know that it's available this way to find it and you can come do that if you want as part of the process. And then.
A public hearing?
Yeah. At our next, I mean, I would just say at our next meeting, just have a, you know.
Prior.
You can call the public hearing or we can just send out a notice to the public saying, hey, this is going to be on the agenda. If you have comments, come talk about it, you know, however we deal with it.
So the next regular meeting is February 2nd. We can.
I don't know, that's Groundhog's Day. We might. It might just.
We can do it over and over again.
Oh, come on, spring. We're getting, we're good.
Oh, yeah, please.
So the question is, do you want to do the public hearing? At times we start them ahead of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, but I think, you know, I'm staying a half hour early, but I think in this case, I don't want, people are used to it being at seven o'clock. So why don't we do a public hearing at 7:00 P M, Thursday, February 2nd? Put the notifications in on the plan of conservation and development to hear from the public if they care to come and speak. And right after the, we close the public hearing, we will carry on with the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting after that.
That's perfect. Sounds good.
Good.
Need a motion?
You're up.
Make a motion that we hold a public hearing in regards to the plan of conservation and development during our February 2nd meeting at 7:00 P M.
Second.
Either way.
Greg, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Will provide direct financial assistance to be eligible, to eligible Southbury nonprofit organizations. The town is utilizing funding from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act for projects and services that benefit the Southbury community. Grants will be awarded in order of application received and approved until the funding is depleted. That's part of the ARPA money. We will have, I think that's, it's a needed, especially needed time to help our nonprofits. New business in Southbury. Southbury is continuing to attract new businesses. Five new businesses are scheduled to open in February and March with six additional new businesses that are in the works. Everybody's excited about Michael's coming. One of the North America's largest providers of arts, crafts, framing, floral, and wall decor and merchandise for makers and do it yourself home decorators is coming to the Southbury Plaza. I know my household is very excited about that. I'm not sure I can afford to have a Michael's here in town, but, and they will have its grand opening and ribbon cutting. Again, my wife normally doesn't go to these things, but I'm sure she'll maybe be there for this one. That ceremony will be February 11th.
Monty's Downtown, an American pub, coming to the Southbury Green in February. And that is where Chips was. The owner is also owns Lucas Local. So that'll be an interesting venture. I have to say, the whole restaurant scene is moving right along. The Bevy Company, a new restaurant bar specializing in craft, cocktails, and cuisine is coming to the 22 Paver Road in March. And Minami Sushi specializes in fresh seafood, fresh sushi. And an all you can eat sushi bar anticipated to open in March in a former Friendly's location on Heritage Road. That's very exciting because I have talked with Heritage Village Masters and the group. I really would like to see if the Heritage location could become a, as I was explaining, mini village of Southbury and more people down there. It'd be great and great for Heritage Village. Your being a Wax Center is scheduled to open at the end of the March. March, I can hardly wait. And not only is Southbury attracting new businesses, we are also attracting shoppers to Southbury. We have learned some exciting news regarding Southbury Ulta Beauty Store. Over Black Friday, the Southbury location was number one in the country for sales and was chosen for a new perfume launch on January 27th. So it's kind of interesting, you know, I remember back in the day when the first, when they opened Victoria's Secret in Southbury, I was like surprised about that. The Yankee Candle Company was the highest volume or dollar in, of all Yankee candle companies. And now Ulta is here and evidently that's number one. Who would think? 350th anniversary kickoff event, it was sold out last Saturday. It was a nice event. It was an interesting event. We'll be having more. There was entertainment by an American pop music time machine. It was nice, I was going to say it was really nice with the town of Hampden, was represented in a letter from the Hampden Mayor, Warren Garrett, wishing the town well and best wishes for the future was received at the event, which is, was unexpected and it was really nice for Hampden to recognize that, our town. And the official block proclamation was read, inviting the entire community to be involved in the activities that was, have been scheduled and there'll be more coming. Going to be a fun year. I encourage the selectmen to be involved as much as possible. Nothing will top a 300 though. Because I have not seen a big ice cream sundae for grabs here. Remember, some of the upcoming events in February include a history talk, the Southbury Snow and Ice Festival, and Southbury Restaurant from February 4th to the 11th. There are 350th commemorative calendars for sale. They're $15. They're on sale at the town clerk, town clerk's office, park and rec, historical society, and all proceeds go to the Southbury Historical Society. I just want to say, this is not just a calendar, because we all have calendars. But I recommend, ask people to take a look at this, pretty comprehensive glimpse of Southbury and some major milestones over the years. And it's kind of a nice little, I got my first sticker. If you go to the event, you get stickers. So let's see if we can sticker up and pick up a calendar.
20 stickers that you've worn.
That's right.
I don't know.
Yeah. They commemorate morning. If you go to 20 events and collect 20 stickers, you get perfectly, you know.
I got one. Long ways to go. Pool survey. The pool survey opened on January 10th and will remain available for input until January 26th. I often say this, on the phone survey, pick up the phone, maybe it's, you're the winner of the survey, maybe it's a telemarketer and you can say goodbye. But if you get telemarked, pick it up and give it a shot. There is a number that if you look, you'll, you'll, you can see the number online and you do get called. So there are 318 phone surveys have been done, 550 online surveys, and several paper surveys have been completed as of 3:00 P M. today. So we're pretty close to getting the surveys set. On the building department side, despite the current economic conditions, our building and land use departments have been very busy with both commercial and residential permitting. The number of building permits issued for last month was 162. So we're still seeing permits being issued, people doing work. The town Southbury is currently looking for another board member to represent Southbury on the Houston Valley Department Board of Directors. If people have any interest, use email or call my office. It doesn't necessarily have to be a background in health. It does help business, it's a help, organization, it's a help. You know, it, it, technical side is always handled within the department, but if you have any interest, please contact my office. Any questions? If not, Justin?
Economic development met last night. We had a lengthy update for Kevin Bielemeyer, basically all of which you discovered for us.
Sorry.
So we'll make that one quick. And obviously Kevin is heavily involved with the 350th. IPOC will not meet until February 8th. Will be our first meeting of the year. It is a quarterly meeting with that group. And then strategic planning, again, Kevin came and chatted with the group about the 350th, all of the events that are going on. And also reminded everybody about the calendar, which is impressive. I also recommend everybody go and get one. And then one last thing. There was some discussion of perhaps updating the community assessment survey of 2018. Yeah, it's been almost, it's been four years. And there's a discussion about whether or not that should be updated. We've got a lot of new people move in, obviously, over the last three years because of COVID and whatnot. So that's, that's something that is being discussed. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Jason?
So I reported that last week. Primary focus of the meeting is they spent a lot of time on their gift fund budget, which they're going to talk about more at their next meeting and approve and what have that, the town tag, it's a special, like, portion of our budget. They talked about 350th anniversary, which I think we talked about tonight, but the sort of library focus and some events that they're thinking of there. And they're continuing their strategic plan process. They have this worker debate forum and they're going through that and discuss some events going on at the library. They have their first pro and glory workshop, and I think we've all seen that our police department is having a holiday story hour there, which I think is great. L E P C has not met since our last meeting. E M S committee has not met since our last meeting. The police study group met last night. Primary focus of that was coming up with a questionnaire for us to go around and interview various towns that we've identified, the number of police departments that we're going to go in towns with police departments to interview, to various categories, folks that who have made the switch from Resident State True to NYPD, folks who haven't, and then perhaps a couple other comparable towns with budgeting and staffing, things of that nature. And some members of the group are going to be meeting with the chief police, chief, dedicated police chiefs association next week at their headquarters.
Thank you. John?
So again, this will be my last meeting with saying this, but my, my, my conditions have not met since we were here together last. But next week, they will all be here. So Wednesday is the community relations task force. Thursday is conservation commission and parks and rec. Come on out and see what they have to say and I'll report that back next time.
Thank you, John. Great. All right. Senior Services Commission met this week. Everybody's looking forward to the new director of senior services, Andrea Burchard. She, I think is coming in on Monday, is coming Monday to meet the staff. And her first day will be on Wednesday. So John's looking forward to that. Energy Task Force met this week and there's a continued focus and discussion on solar project. Looks like the library may be a potential target as a site benefiting from solar generation and what that might look like. Lots of discussion, kind of working out different financial scenarios, you know, ultimately, coming up with a case for how, how would this benefit, say, the library and Southbury as a whole? If you do this project, what are the benefits? So just putting together, you know, that, that type of information. So continuing to move forward very constantly. I T steering committee did not meet and I'll follow in.
Sullivan is not here. Just a bench, quick mention on, with our, our police. If you do have a chance to go, I did go to the last one, it's very heartwarming to see the connection between, between the children and our police. And others have shown up and they took the liberty of asking the children if they wanted to know a secret about one of our officers. And of course, they were very interested in that. And I explained that some of our officers actually have family farms. And our youth officers' family has a farm in New Hampshire. To make sure they understand that our police are also moms, dads. Deandre Pierce came in. I asked him, can you talk about your children? And his children are about the same age. So that our children grow up knowing that. And his children are about the same age so that our children grow up knowing that there are officers who are there to help and protect us and the society, but there are also parents, fathers, brothers and sisters. Because when you see them all in a uniform, you only identify that. You know, and it's pretty good. So if you get a chance to, to pop in as a selectman and see that interaction, I think it'll make your day. So very important. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we do?
Oh, sorry.
Someone just texted me and about 95% of the meeting has no audio on the line right now, so something just.
Yeah, something's going.
We usually have like a backup when you post, right?
Yeah.
I have this and I have a recording.
Yeah, we have backup.
Two backups.
It's a new system.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll say it again. Okay. All in favor? All right.